Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Tiger Tuolton School Board. I will call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. All right, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I second.
Motion is made by Vice Chair Heimason, seconded by Director Zerschmid. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and with that, we will move to our best part of the evening, our recognition and good news, and I will bring up Lisa Burton and Director Bailey. A whole bunch of people.
All right. Good evening, esteemed board members, superintendent, cabinet members, and guests. We are excited to present to you the 2025 Classified Employees of the Year. These individuals, we are recognizing this evening, were nominated by their peers and administrators based on demonstrating the qualities that we're looking for in our Bev Farnsworth Excellence of Service Award recipient. Bev was an incredible secretary at Byram Elementary School, who was known for her ability to build community and connect in genuine ways with students, staff, families, and community members. She was a difference maker and demonstrated service excellence. Bev understood how maintaining positive relationships and attention to her role are key to a school's success. With that being said, I would like to introduce you to the following employees of the year who embodied these same traits. As I read your names, please stand up, come forward, and line up along the left-hand side over here, please. Before we read the first name, I'd like to draw attention to that first slide and have a public bit of gratitude for Humble Pie Baking Company, our sponsor for this year, who were kind to donate a small little token of appreciation for each of the award winners tonight. And now, the Classified Employees of the Year. From Alberta Ryder Elementary, Delbert Riadil, Learning Specialist Assistant. From Art Rutkin Elementary, Jackie Orojo. From Bridgeport Elementary, Michelle Smith. From Byram Elementary, Takumbo Okadara. From CFT Elementary, Bobby Fiorito. From Creekside Community High School, Brianna Cosmiki. From Deer Creek Elementary, Elan Jacobson. From Durham Elementary, Adela Mendez Zapata. And from Fowler Middle School, Natalie Soriano Castro. Hazelbrook Middle School, Anne Leonardo. From the Hibbard District Office, Rebecca Pedron. And from Mary Woodward Elementary, Mary Mastin. Metzger Elementary, Heidi Swayze. And in Nutrition Services, Haley Day. And our Operations Department, Matt Younger. In Special Programs, Roger Desert. Templeton Elementary, Helen Abiret. At Tigerhead High School, Olivia Arzendi Vasquez. And our Transportation Department, Cheryl Weiss. And the Tiger Tuolton Virtual Academy, Gabi Oliveras. At Tuolton Elementary, Amanda Thorson. Tuolton High School, Josh Byrne. And Tuolty Middle School, Michelle Beck. Classified staff, we appreciate you. Can we please give them a huge round of applause? Before we dismiss everybody, each recipient will receive a small token of appreciation from the district, which says, "2025 Classified Employee of the Year, in appreciation of your service to Tiger Tuolton School District." In addition, we have a special local sponsor for this event, Humble Pie Baking Company. They donated some special pies for each award recipient.
Okay, everybody, we'll do a group pick in a second. But before we do, what I'd like to do is give the presentation for the 2025 Beth Farnsworth Award. So again, thanks, everyone, for being here. All of us has seen firsthand the many ways that classified employees contribute to a positive school environment and making a difference for our students. Each award recipient this evening was nominated by peers and selected by their building administrators as an exemplary model in service to their building. Tonight's celebration is a way to show our appreciation for their dedication and commitment to our school communities and district. Among these amazing people is one staff member who has distinguished themselves as a community builder, a difference maker who shows up in excellence every day and goes beyond what is expected. I'll read this letter from the principal describing what makes them this year's Beth Farnsworth Award recipient. This special person is in their third year as head secretary of our elementary school, but her years working in this role do not reflect her impact on this community. She's not only worked as part of the front office team. Before the role of head secretary, they were a parent, PTA member, a founder of our school's arts foundation, leads the safety committee, is the classified staff union rep, co-building equity coordinator, and co-leads the wellness committee. She's amazing and is committed to the school in a way rarely seen by any staff member. Staff, family, and students know that if you need something or you need to know how to do something, she has your back. If she doesn't know the answer, you can be guaranteed that she'll be doing her best to figure out how to solve problems that come her way. As a building principal, I'm not quite sure where I'd be without her. She's someone I can count on and, without fail, is there to make sure I can do my job. I know I'm not the only person that feels this way about her. Her dedication to our school is unmatched. What a touching tribute, the job and dedication that this staff member does for our students. With those words in mind, please join me in congratulating Head Secretary at Tuolton Elementary, Amanda Thorsten. Thorson. Thank you so much, Amanda, for your unwavering commitment to our school community, and congratulations on being the Beth Farnsworth Award winner. And now it's time for pictures and a celebrate.
One more round of applause for all of our amazing classified employees.
I'm just going to acknowledge that it's there, that we have it. Because it's not part of consent, and I don't want to read the whole thing, so we're just gonna. All right, with that, we are going to continue on to our next item. And I did just want to acknowledge that we do have the Classified Appreciation Week Resolution 2425-08 that is in honor of our classified employees. So with that, we will move on to student rep reports, and whoever would like to begin.
All right, okay. So, a few weeks ago, we had my Lanzu Chinese field trip. It was on the 15th, and as you know, that was also the snow days, which was really, really scary because I thought it would be canceled, which I was not very happy about. But it didn't cancel. We went to it, and we had such an amazing time. I really loved it. And with that, this week is our Kindness Week at Tigerhead High School. And so I'm teaming up, so Stud, our No Place For Hate leadership. And one more, I think, is we're all combining or collabing together to help spread kindness throughout Tigerhead High School, and I'm super excited. Today, we helped make little cute chains, and we placed some kind hearts onto our little kindness tree. And then next week after that is Wellness Week, and so I'm hoping to plan for that as well. And then for last week, we also celebrated Unity Week, and it was so, so, so amazing. So throughout the week, we had so many activities. For example, we had our Voices Assembly, which is always nice for each year to hear all the different stories that all of my peers have. And it's just so amazing just to hear how similar and how different we are, and it was just an amazing experience. As well as that, we also had our multicultural assembly, which was so, so, so nice. I definitely had a workout during it, so we were able to do some dances, which was so much fun. And for Asian Student Union, we did some origami for our lunch activity. It was super good. We also shared some Asian jelly cups, which was so, so, so nice to see everybody crowded around our table. So that's kind of what we did for Unity Week.
Also, for Unity Week, we had, like Nathan mentioned, we had little activities each lunch. So one lunch, she essayed, did a kahoot, and then like pins. And then Mecha did some pinata making. And then Black Student Union had a kahoot. And there were just different activities like that. And along with our multicultural assembly, we had many performances. We had a group perform from our, I think it's our guitar three or four. They performed, and then Mecha de El Caballo Dorado. And then we also had Pacifica doing some of their dances, which were really awesome. And then moving on to my aspect of sports. So today was Unified's senior night today, so it was very nice. Tomorrow, we'll be having a girls' basketball game versus St. Mary's as well. They will be having their senior night as well. Freshman boys' basketball is on Wednesday. Thursday, we have a guitar rock showcase at 6:00. I think Friday is our Japan night, 5:30, which will be presented by our Japanese on society. And then girls' and boys' basketball team has a game at Lake Osego from 4:30 to 7:30. Oh, and theater shows will be opening next week, so I'd be really glad if you guys came and joined us on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday.
Okay, at Tuolton, last Saturday, the 22nd, was our winter formal. It was very successful, and from all the feedback that I've received so far, a lot of people had fun, so that's a great plus. And then also, over the weekend, our HOSA club went to our state leadership conference, and it was also very successful. We probably had the most qualifying students going to internationals in a long time, so that's really great to see. And then last week on Wednesday was our blood drive, where we collected around 50 successful units, which is great. Tomorrow night, there is a snowboarding and ski club fundraiser at McMiniman's John Barley Corns, which the snowboard and ski team had a competition over the weekend as well. And two boys placed top 25. One actually got second, so that's big congratulations. And then FBLA has a fundraiser at Red Robin at Nyberg on March 6.
Last Saturday, Tuolton hosted the stamp test for the Seal of Bat Literacy. It's a great opportunity for kids that grew up in a bilingual house or students who are learning a foreign language at the high school to be able to test to get that international recognition. For students who couldn't make it, there'll be additional opportunities at Tigerhead this Saturday or during wind times in March. Friday, we have the Curriculum Fair, where usually seniors will be hosting stands, advertising to underclassmen about a curriculum than like any elective that they have. I think it's great that the seniors who have gone through it get to talk about the experience that they had and are currently still having for the next few months, to really talk about firsthand why they enjoyed it. And then in the middle of our very extended weekend, two weekends back, on Saturday, the 15th, Cheer One State. The last two years, they went to Nationals. This year, state and Nationals were the same weekend, so they stayed local and went to state and won. And then for other sports, wrestling has their state championship on Friday and Saturday at the Memorial Coliseum.
And then just to add about the Curriculum Fair, this year, we're like, our school's really emphasizing, like, our IB classes, like, really pushing those out. So for every IB class at our school, will be two students that'll have their own table at the Curriculum Fair. And so it's for parents and family and students to come and really just see, like, from an actual student that takes the class, like, what the workload is like and how the class is structured, which is great.
Just to add on, also, Tigerhead's wrestling, girls and boys qualified for state as well. We had many people, so that's very exciting for wrestling, so just wanted to add that.
Great updates. Thank you, you guys. I know it's kind of rolling into a very busy time of year, so I'm excited to hear everything that's going on. I want to close the loop on our last, it was an action item. Typically, those resolutions are in a consent agenda, but this one was pulled out, and so I just want to cross our Ts, dot our Is, so I will, because it was an action item. Call for a vote to approve the Celebrate Classified Appreciation Week, which is Resolution 2425-08 as presented.
So I don't want this to sound like an afterthought, because our classified staff are so super important to us. This resolution really does talk about all of the amazing things that classified staff do, and I would encourage anybody, everybody, to read it. We talk a lot about how important our teachers are. Often, when we talk about teachers, we're really talking about every staff member in the building, and that includes all of our classified staff, because every child who has an adult doesn't necessarily have to be a teacher who's important. It could be also a classified staff. So with that, I'll get off my soapbox and say, I move to approve Resolution 2425-08, Classified Appreciation Week as presented.
Second. Motion is made by Director Zerschmid and seconded by Director Miles. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And I know this will also be talked about, I bet, in our board communications. So with that, I will pass it to our superintendent.
Thank you very much. First off, it's just great to see all of our teams having success right now as we bring our winter season to a close and as we start to open up our spring sports. So I'll be really interested to see how our wrestlers do, how our basketball teams do as we go to close out the winter season strong. Also, starting the night off with recognizing our classified employees in Classified Employee Week was just a wonderful way to kick things off this evening. I can't emphasize enough how essential their contributions are to the success of our schools. And to put it plainly, our classified employees, they're the heartbeat of our schools. They're often the first people that our students see when they're getting on the bus or in the front office. They're on the front lines, ensuring that our schools are safe and ready for students. But they also do so much work behind the scenes that we just don't see, making sure lights are turned on, making sure bills get paid, and that our schools are running smoothly. And their dedication is just truly invaluable. So I just want to take a moment to tell you all, if you think about that classified employee that really helped you out when you were in school or that you got a strong connection with. For me, it was a guy named Walt Fetgater at Roosevelt Middle School, who made sure, like, he was someone to talk to if you had to talk to him, but also made sure you crossed the road safely. So, and think of a classified staff member that you're currently working with now. So again, thank you to all of our classified staff. Moving on to our special education funding, I want to talk about that for a moment. We have over 3,000 bills that were presented in this year's legislative session, so there's a great deal of things being debated in Salem right now. And there is one issue that I'm particularly hopeful that will get attention, and that's the issue of special education funding. At the last board meeting during our work session, Director of Student Services Carol Kinch did an outstanding job of articulating our philosophy of inclusion and ensuring that all students with disabilities and special needs have access to education in the least restrictive environment. And so tonight, you'll hear a presentation, again, from Director Kinch, showing how high-cost special education is impacting our district. In 2223 alone, high-cost special education services cost TTSD about $2.8 million. And in 2425, it's only going to be more. And here's the challenge, is you can't put a price tag on the commitment that we're making to ensure that all students have access to the education that they deserve. So as the state works through the 2527 State School Fund and makes decision on critical issues, we're closely monitoring the high-cost special education funding, and this is something that we're going to advocate for. We're really fortunate in our district that we have two representatives, and Representative Bowman and Neuron, who understand the needs of our districts. But we really need to make sure we're raising awareness on what it takes to ensure that we're providing high-quality education to all and the impact of the high-cost special education spending as well. Also, boundary updates. So last board meeting, we gave you an update on where we are with our boundary adjustments. Over the last few months, we resumed the planning on our boundary adjustments. And today, I want to share some details. So we're in the process of developing a multi-year plan with changes set for the 2526 school year. Now, some options are under consideration for next year, including redistricting 79 students from the Mary Woodward catchment area located just north of Bull Mountain Road and/or 79 students from the Deer Creek catchment area just north of Beef Bend Road. This will increase the overall enrollment in Art Rutkin. It would take it from about 130, 135 to well over 200, and on its way to be operating at capacity after a few years. We're also scheduling a community engagement session with the impacted schools on March 3rd and March 4th. And in these sessions, we'll meet with schools from the impacted areas. And especially with the Mary Woodward community, we'll see that some of these changes will really improve or reduce the amount of travel distances of the affected students, and also make for, I think, cleaner boundary lines. So again, we're looking forward to engaging with the community about this as well, so we can get their input. And then we'll bring our final recommendations to the board on the 7th. And then finally, just some upcoming events this week. Just really one event. On Wednesday, we have our budget committee, our second budget committee meeting. Oh, there's a picture of yours truly, speaking at our first budget committee meeting. We had about 30 participants or so, and our first meeting was hard to tell because there was a lot of district staff sprinkled in there. But that was our Budget 101 session. So this next session, this Wednesday, here in the training center, will be focused on instructional programming and how it ties into our budget. Events like these are examples of authentic community engagement, and they'll also help us gather really important community input. So we really look for... So we really look forward to, to seeing more community members show up again that will be here at the Training Center, starting at 5:30 on Wednesday. And that's it for my updates.
Thank you so much, and we will move to board communications. Anyone want to start us off? Vice Chair?
I don't have much, but I do want to say that I would like to thank, as the Superintendent said, all of our classified employees, because without them, we truly couldn't run the school district. Like you said, I agree with you. I think from the moment that our students get on the school bus and, you know, they come into our schools, they're greeted by our